Okay, it's nine o'clock on March the 13th, so we'll call this regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court to order. Today, we're going to have Jerry, now Walker will speak, but today we've got Chris Grota from the North Jefferson Church of Christ that will lead our prayer. So if everybody would like to stand, we'll start with the prayer.
Our call to God at heaven, we come bold into the throne of your grace, holding reverence in your name. All honor and praise be to you. We're thankful to see another day. We're thankful for our health and the general prosperity of peace that we enjoy on a regular basis. We pray for our citizens, that as a whole, our families might be guided by your living and powerful word. That we might be a God-fearing and law-abiding society. We pray over this court, for our future as stewards. We are grateful for Joyce Simpson's presence this morning, and we pray over her health. We pray for discernment and wisdom and understanding and considering the agenda items. We pray for the ability to make wise and thoughtful decisions that are in the best interest of all Midas County citizens. We pray that you will guard, guide, and direct those who serve in this court and represent and serve their neighbors. And may your hand of providence and protection ever be on our county employees and those who serve and protect. Honor for these and any other personal petitions that we may have. We pray in the name of Jesus Christ, our King of Kings and Lord of Lords.
Let me...
Thank you. I flickered the flag, stood the flag, and I'm the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public comments and requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with Section 551.042 of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Jerry?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Jerry Walker, and I have spent my entire life in community service. Beginning my job as a big rear passenger of his wife, who's also very happy in community. And her daughter provided daycare for folks that work in the field. I try a lot of things of community service to help the people go to doctor's appointments and all the lines filled and such and such. Then, one of the things I've realized that we can't provide transportation is myself from Arkansas, Texas, and Louisiana for medical appointments and Chevron. And I also was on the county authority here for board of directors for five years. But before you, one of my other passions, since 1985, I assisted individuals with funerals in the community. Over the years, it's become more complex to deal with this type of mission because most of us don't want to deal with sickness and death, but they're just a part of life. And before you today, I've asked the Commissioners to look at the amount that they put on funeral services. I've helped people over the years, for years, and I think that that amount needs to be reviewed and reevaluated from the amount that is scheduled right now to between $1,500 and $2,000. I ask that those of you who are the Commissioners before you to create an agenda item and bring in four funeral homes. I've worked at all four funeral homes over the years. I would recommend that you would go at Toomey Funeral Home, ask for me, Lily Toomey-Ronze and Tony Ronze to come and represent that funeral home. Also, J.C. White to represent, Sister White's Funeral Home. Justin Edwards to represent, Curry Well, and Stuart Sloan to represent, Bayfield Sloan Funeral Homes. I think it's something that needs enough to take care that a loved one can have a funeral if they just necessarily have an immediate burial or grave site. Right now, the amount of money is not enough money based upon the year of 2023. And I ask for you to contact those four funeral homes to do that and make that. And I ask also, as the public servant, that you recuse the present county judge from public comments, public discussion, or voting on the petition. That's my stuff today.
Thank you, Jerry.
Go ahead.
Educate them people over there, them blue Tigers. Considering possibly number three on the agenda be, considering possibly approve the purchase of a new John Deere tractor, a 610M with a 22-foot boom mower from Tiger Corp. George Bane Incorporated approved through buy board for $188,248. Would...
That'd be my...
That'd be yours, Jeff. You have any comments on that tractor or anything?
No, everything looks good to me. A new side boom mower for us, so I make a motion that we approve this bid.
Got a motion by Commissioner Parchman to buy that mower.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Since I skipped over number two, we'll go back to it. We're considering possibly approve the minutes from the February 27th, 2023 special meeting of the Commissioners' Court. We got a motion by Commissioner Applewhite to approve those minutes.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimous. Item number four on the agenda is considering possibly approve seeking bids for four new half-ton, four-wheel-drive, four-door pickup trucks. Says here from a local dealer through an approved purchasing corporate for the county Commissioners to drive in lieu of mileage. That should say on there. Just to have that on there is a possibility, not a have-to on the local dealers bidding on those. The reason that I'm the one to put that on there, I feel like this can save the county some money. It also puts the Commissioners' cars so that we've got maintenance on them for the years that they're driving those. It also lets those people out in the county know the Commissioner, who the Commissioner is. They'll all be the same trucks. We'll have a Commissioner's stamp on each door for those. So when someone pulls up, they're not just pulling up in an unmarked car. And that's the reason that I put it on there, just to get those bids and see if we can do some business with local dealers here in Mount Pleasant and those from out of town as well.
Well, I make a motion to approve the...
We got a motion by Commissioner Mitchell to approve getting the bids on those.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. For five, considering possibly approve seeking bids for air conditioning unit upgrade and improvements for countywide. Barbara, I could be wrong. I think we've got 40, 45 or... 45. We're still waiting on wood air conditioner to give us those total of those. The reason being that this is on the agenda item. We do have that money there that I want us to take care of doing some things with. But our air conditioning system, I'm getting bills once a week for $3,000 here, $6,000, $9,000. And every time I talk to them, they tell us that those units are 20 years old, 30 years old. We don't know how old all of them are. We're going to get an evaluation, like to get an evaluation of those and see how much it would be for each unit. The thing that I do want to caution about on that, that I didn't know about until one of my units broke down at the funeral home in 2025. President Biden has put in a new law for the green, and so the rating of that air conditioner will have to go up. So I do want an evaluation of them and a price the best that they can. We may have to wait, may put a couple of units in and have to wait on all of the units because of the rating of those with the federal government is going to a different rating. So I'd hate to put 45 units in, and then they come back and tell us that we can't use those. The problem being with that, it's not going to be a sunsetted deal like before. All the other laws with the government have been where that they have a sunset so that they have to make the parts for so many years. This one is supposedly, they're just going to wipe the parts out within a five-year period. So will you be able to fix those units? Yes. Will it be expensive? I would say yes as well. So that's not in there, but I do want to make sure that they will be in compliance with those federal standards as well.
When we go have a chance to know when that comes?
I'm not sure on when they can get those units. We've got two units that are completely out at this time. The district judges is out, and the county attorney's air conditioning units are out. So we're going to have to move forward on two of those units pretty quick, like, because it's almost summertime, and they don't want to be hot, I guess, so. But I would like to move forward with getting that evaluation and bids on those air conditioning units.
How we're going to do that, Judge? We're going to have the people that want to look at them and all, we're going to have somebody carry them around or whatever?
We do, we do need to do that. Someone said that James might be available to do that because he maybe know where they all are. I haven't spoken with James on that. If he does know where they are, if he can carry, because if we, if one company carries the others all around, then they can't bid on it.
Yeah.
So that would be ideal, but they're supposed to, Wood's supposed to be giving me a diagram of all of our units. Once we get that, then I'll know where they are. At this time, I don't know where they are.
I talked to James Thursday, I guess it was, and he said that he would be more than willing to show them around. He said, "I know where most all of them are." Said, "Some of them will be behind locked doors, and I'll have to get with John to, you know, open doors or whatever on those." But he said, "I'd be more than willing to..."
That'd be perfect then to get those all done, so. In that bid... Yes, ma'am, Barbara.
One thing that's going to be important, because for all the local vendors to be able to bid, we can't allow them to write the specifications. They can give us the list like they're talking about. So what happens is, the way that works for purchasing is I'll have it added in the newspaper and ask anyone who's interested in participating to come to a pre-bid conference. We may have to have several of those depending upon how long it takes for those companies to evaluate the air conditioner. They're going to need more time than just walking in and James saying, "Here it is." They may need to open it and look in it, and we need to allow everybody that opportunity because Wood knows that now because they can manage those for us.
Right.
So that's how, that's how that will kind of play out. It may take some time for those evaluations, but then we get their own evaluations.
And Wood should be able to give us a year's date on those, that each one is, without affecting them. Is that correct? They can get...
Yes, well, each one will do their own evaluation.
But what I'm saying is, Wood's supposed to be sending me a list of the 45 units that we already have.
Yes, that was included in the original HVA plan three years...
Right, that's what I was...
But the location of those is why we need somebody to take...
Yeah, right. But it still is okay for them to tell me how old they are in their report without affecting them on the bid process. Okay.
Is that going to cover mine too? Out there at the, my maintenance shop, my building out there, I need to buy it myself?
I'm assuming any one with the, if it's connect, I'm sure it's, do they service your unit?
Mm-hmm.
Then it would be included in those 45, so.
Till they went out, now you got heat or...
Cool. We'll put you down on the bottom of the list, but we'll get you on the list, just didn't say where on the list. Yes, Dan, if you like. Like I said, when we do get that, I've got those two as a priority mark right now because they are totally out, and we'll put yours on that list as well. So we'll take a...
Make a motion.
Make a motion to get the bids on the air conditioners for the countywide. Seconded by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Number six, considering possibly approve the purchase of a New Holland loader backhoe from New Holland Construction. George Bane Incorporated approved through buy board for $126,344.88. Which Commissioners?
Yes, ma'am.
That's Jimmy's?
Yeah. I have checked with Bane, Barbara's checked with buy board. Everything is good to go with that, so I make a motion that we approve that.
Got a motion by Commissioner Parker to approve the purchase of the backhoe.
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Number seven, considering possibly approve the purchase of a 2022 RS360 from R.B. Everett and Company, approved through buy board purchasing company or corp for $517,600. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Jim, I think you know a little more about this machine than...
Yeah.
We'll let everybody talk about it, but let you start.
Jeff and I talked to the guy down at school from R.B. Everett, and they have got one on hand. Barbara has gone through, we've worked with our salesman that we got, bought our distributor truck and the chip machine from. He got us some bids and all on this, and I mean, it's, from what I can find out and all, and the checking that I've done on it is probably our best thing, especially it being in stock because they, they're kind of hard to find. They, I asked him about used ones, and he said that they had took their used fleet and had sold everything that they, just about that they had in their used and rental fleet. Said they still had some, but they wasn't, wasn't for sale now, so. That's, while we had the money to work with, that we, we thought it might be good to go ahead and...
Have we discussed, been able to lease any of that equipment at all?
Well, I talked to him about renting them. He said it would cost $14,000 a month to rent one, and I'm with Jimmy on this. I feel like this is a piece of equipment that the county needs. We have an old Bowmag right now that I, for one, do not like to use it because I don't like the after, I don't like what it produces. So I think the RX300 we have does a good job, and I think this new piece of equipment would be a good asset to the county, so.
So that would give us three of those Bowmags? Is it?
It will till that old Bowmag lays down. I mean, and that could happen at any time. I use it quite a bit, and it, in fact, we're fixing to start using it here in a few days if it, weather allows it. But it's, it's old, can't hardly get parts or anything for it. It's got an old Detroit engine in it, and it, you gotta pour a half a gallon of oil in it every day before you start with it. So it could lay down at any, any point, and then, you know.
Well, that's quite a bit of money to spend on one piece of equipment. That's when we got two in deal. I know one of them, I'm a new Commissioner, and I haven't run either one of them, but we've got two pieces of equipment now, and you're saying one of them is wore out? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. The old Bowmag is, I mean, like I say, it could lay down at any moment, but it, it may last another three, four, five years.
Well, that's the one y'all like to use, is the old one, ain't it?
That's the one I like to use.
Yeah.
Jeff likes the big one. The big one is so big, I've got a lot of roads that, that there may not be a whole lot of places to turn around, and you've got to have a big area to turn that thing around. So I'd have to go all the way to the end of the road, turn in, come all the way back before I could, you know. It's just so big that my guys don't even like to use it because of that.
Wouldn't it be cheaper to put a new engine in that in our off-season than it would to buy a $500,000 Bowmag? That's what I'm asking.
I don't think so, Joe D., because the, the thing about this old one is the other parts and stuff. We're having trouble now getting the teeth, the digging teeth for it now.
Oh, well, they outdated them or what? Don't use them no more?
It's, it's just a different style. It's old, so I'm trying to remember what that thing is. I'm wanting to say it's a, in the mid to early to mid-'70s model.
Yeah.
But it's a MH100. There's still a few of them out there. I see them every now and then on these trader deals and all, or some of the county getting rid of one.
Well, what's the chances of buying a used one versus buying a new one?
Well, the used ones that I tried to find, they just wasn't hardly any of them out there.
They're not available.
They're not available.
Okay, those are my questions.
Yeah. Barbara, can I ask you a question on this? With that money, since we have transferred that out of the grant, I mean, we didn't transfer it, we used that money, but we're using general funds to do this. Would that be possible for us just to use those for a lease? If they're saying $14,000 a month, could we take, we can just take that and pay for the three-month lease instead of coming out of all four of their budgets is the question that I'm asking.
Oh, yes. I mean, I'm assuming that y'all expect to continue to come out of those funds, that four or five funds?
Right, but that's what I'm saying. I'm just asking if we could use that for that lease, for, try it for a year out of that money and lease it. If that lease doesn't work, then we certainly could go back and take care of purchasing one. I just feel like that's, that's quite a bit of money, and I'm not trying to not spend that money, but if we could, if we can use those funds that are in that general fund so that it doesn't come out of each one of them's budget, their total budget.
Certainly can do that. The other thing you have to consider is that this model is $517,000 and some change. You only set aside $350,000. So if you're going to do that, you're going to have to reduce, I'm assuming, one of your $500,000 that you set aside in order to cover that for this purchase. With regard to reading, I think it may take more than three months and done for us to read that. If you want to sign and go back around?
That's the thing, we don't ever know. I mean, it, we may be through in three months, and we may, it may be six months before we're through with it. That's, that's the thing. Because we've all got to use, you know, whatever we've got to work with, and some of us have to wait for the others to get through. If, you know, if I'm using it and Joe D. needs it, then we've got to, got to wait. I've got to wait till he gets through, and so...
Well, that'd still be the case if we bought it. That'd still be the case if we bought it.
That's going to be the case either way.
Either way.
Yeah, but, and that's one, one thing that I was thinking about, me and Jeff talked about a little bit at school, was the, if we had had another one, then that would give three of us a chance to work at the same time. You know, and, and all. But if, if we do lease one, if we can even find one to lease, this late in the year, people have already started, you know, a lot of the companies have already got their lease stuff already set aside for somebody. So we just have to check and see, I guess, if, if there's some out there.
And that's another thing, each, there are four employees from each precinct that run this thing, and now every one of them's going to run it the same. So when it breaks down, how long we going to be out of a piece of machinery before waiting on parts or waiting to get that product fixed? That's what I'm asking. And then why would we have to bring it out of our $500,000? Are there other line items on there that couldn't be shaved from?
There are other lines, which y'all have to make that decision. What we have right now was $500,000 for each precinct plus about $585,000 for shared equipment, and this is a shared equipment item that's in there.
I mean, that could be changed, right? We can pull something somewhere else off of one of the, if we desire.
So what I'm saying is, if you approve this item, then I'm also going to need the information from you so where do you want to take the rest of that?
Okay.
Well, I make a motion that we approve this. I don't see it coming any other better way than this, so that's my opinion, but.
Motion by Commissioner Parchman to approve the $517,600.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
How you vote?
Opposed.
Opposed. Okay, so that's going to come down to me. So I'm going to say that we're going to table this and see if we can't, so I'm going to vote no, I guess. That's what I'm saying. Considering possibly approve participation in a reimbursement grant that will cover the cost of badges for the sheriff's department and allow county to purchase badges in advance up to $90,000. Those is not going to be badges, those, those will be shields. And Chris, if you don't mind, if you'll come and speak a little on that?
Morning.
Morning.
I was just, I was just here with the school shooting that took place back in the valley. After that shooting, the governor and the legislature put together grants for law enforcement to purchase ballistic shields separated from rifle rounds up the three- year olds. We put in for that grant to see if we could qualify for that. We put in for 23 shields, build an outfit every vehicle that we have. We're responding to any type of shooting, whether it be a school, church, or a facility. Governor's office ran it as 20 of those shields. Shield prices, $4,200 per shield, $90 for the bag per shield to keep them covered, and the $280 for the map. Total grant comes to $87,120. As with other grants, what we have to do is we actually spend that money, and we take the receipts, and we send them to the governor's office, and they reimburse us for full price of $87,120.
You say that one more time, 80, 80 what?
$87,120 is what we'll approve for, which would cover the purchase price of 20 ballistic shields, 20 bags, and batteries to operate the lights on the front of those shields. So for any dark situations, the lights and shields will go with them. Always, we're going to remove the shields in that situation.
Not that matters, Chris, but do you know what timeframe on the turnaround? I'm 100% for buying those for y'all, but do you know what turnaround time on getting those, the money back on that grant?
When we talk to other agencies around us that were also approved for, that actually have got the shields in there, so they were around three, eight months.
Not a problem.
Took care of them.
Right.
And we stayed with that.
Well, it's worth the...
While we approved, and then approved, so we got confirmation that they have been approved for that amount of money to split the ballistic shields.
Right. Well, we appreciate y'all's service, and I think it's very well needed, and I'll make the motion to approve that grant.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Now, carries unanimous now. Number nine, consider and possibly reapprove the Mitchell subdivision on County Road 3245. Clint, would you like to come and speak on that? I'm assuming that's not you.
Back in 2019, Justice Fisher proposed subdivision of this property with a small subdivision, basically just creating two lights out of the property that he had. And I wish he would have come up with an idea for how they were going to be separated then rather than now because apparently, after trying to sell it, being unable to, he realized that it was a bit cramped. So basically, he's always doing is evening these lights up. The easement or the right of way going into one of these lights is basically just making that, his second light a little more big, both lights are still, make them in the light size required. This is really just a simple matter of re-lighting.
So you have no problems with it at all? And the sewer and all that, it's fine?
If he is existing sewer, probably have to have the sprinkler heads moved.
Okay. But he...
We'll talk about this one.
But he realizes that now. Okay, thank you, Clint. I make motion we approve. Got a motion by Commissioner Parker to approve this replat.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimously carries. Number 10, considering possibly approve the enforcement of Texas and Safety Health Code. We spoke to this quite a bit down in College Station with the Nuisance Authority. This is going to include, and this is going to be Clint's job, and we've spoken with him about it. Not everybody's going to be happy when Clint comes, knocks on their door, and tells them about their cars, but this is going to include old cars, washing machines in some of the, some of the precincts that I've rolled around in, also refrigerators, stoves, tires, garbage is what it, what it amounts to. I've already got a little bit of kickback on it, and they said, "Well, I live in the country." I said, "You absolutely do, but there's other people that live in the country as well." I spoke with Clint. He will be enforcing this law now after we've been down there. I've talked with the JP's. They're going to stand behind us, and if they want to appeal it over here to me, I'm going to stand by it 100% as well. Just because you live in the country don't mean that you can have everybody else's view and everything messed up. There's cars and things of that nature. They can either put a privacy fence around it, or they can move it to the center of their property if it stays away from the 300 feet from the... feet, from the.
Is it three hundred feet?
Three hundred. Three hundred feet from the public streets. And, uh, so it's already a law, there's a new law that, that come along with it, with the, the three forty-three oh one one, and there's all, that's the law that Clint prefers, I think, but there's two different laws there. We're gonna try to clean the county up. Like I said, if it, if it upsets you to have to move an old car or something out of, out of the way or put a fence around them, I apologize now, but we're gonna clean the county up and, and move forward on that and, and that's why we put this on agenda. We spoke with other, other places, other counties, they're having a lot of the same problems, but when they started doing this and enforcing this law, it cleaned things up. We can't even go to the, to the matter of, if we do, if they do push the issue, we can carry it all the way to where we go clean it up and then put a lien against their property. And I don't think they're gonna do that, but Titus County is my hometown, always been here, I'm proud to be from Titus County and I want everybody to wanna come here because it's not all trashed up, so that's, that's the reason that this is on the deal today.
I make a motion to approve the, the Texas Health and Safety Code.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve this.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Applewatt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Discuss and possibly reconsider request by Preford Manufacturing to waive a penalty of interest for a late payment of taxes on February, from February the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three Commissioners Court in light of section three-three dash dot zero one one of the Texas Tax Code. When they brought that to us, there was a little misunderstanding on that. The only way that we can waive anything is if the entity has made a mistake as far as sending out the, the notice, sent it to the wrong address, there's several things here. We spoke with them, spoke with Eddie Preford as well, they weren't totally understanding what all went on with this. I went and spoke with Melissa and legally, what we voted to do was to, to waive that and legally, we cannot do that. And I think it's the right thing to do is, is to move it back, the Prefords understand that, it's, it's not right, we wouldn't be able to do it for anyone else going forward because of the legal ramifications of it, so that's what, where we stand at on that as, as far as rescinding that request to waive those taxes. And Melissa, I think you spoke with him as well.
Yes, sir.
So everybody's, everybody knows what we've got to do and we tried to do something that, that we weren't legally able to do.
I make a motion, we rescind that motion made on February thirteenth.
We got a motion by Commissioner Parker to rescind the motion that we made on February the thirteenth.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number twelve, approve oral and written reports of the county officials. Barbara, you got something?
Yes, sir, I'm ready. Commissioners, I sent you my standard report and the last item on there is bidding requirements. I've met with our county attorney, John Mark Hober, several times, and we came up with a suggestion that perhaps we need to put together some highlights for you. Just, I, I know, I know that you go to training, they talk to you about the purchasing laws. I know that in the County Congress Magazine, that it comes out every December, Commissioner Mitchell has not seen it yet because he's not been in the course in January, but there are instructions in it, and it's very important that we follow these things. So, um, it's, there are several laws, I'll give those to you. Texas Local Government Code, Chapter two, type two, which is known as the County Purchasing Act, the Local Government Code two seven one, Local Government Code seven nine one, Texas Government Code two two six nine, Local Government Code one seven six, and Texas Government Code two two five two. That's a whole lot of statutes for me to tie in on one page, but I'll try to put this together to assist y'all so that you have it handy if you have any questions. So I'm gonna go over the highlights if y'all mind. Counties cannot pay for a purchase if it was not made according to applicable law. Sealed bid, bids or proposals are required for purchases over fifty thousand dollars. Separate sequential or component purchases to circumvent the law are not allowed. For purchases over fifty thousand dollars with newspaper bidding requirements apply unless the item is being purchased through an approved purchasing cooperative. Now, let's stop right there. There have been times in the past since I've been here that we did have to put things in the newspaper because we weren't spending more than fifty thousand dollars. We've had three meetings with our outside consultant, Mark Taylor, from Trailer Associates, and we set aside five hundred thousand dollars for each commissioner and some shared service items. We have to go out for bids on these items. I'm sorry to be the messenger to have to bring this to you and remind you about it, but it's very important that we follow these things.
Now, Barbara, when you talk about that, the money that they set aside, that each commissioner, the, the five hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay, you, you took that out of, out of those funds before we paid the fire department and the sheriff's department as well?
Well.
So did it stay in, in the federal?
No, it's state requirements.
Okay.
What I reported to you today are only the state requirements. Federal requirements are more stringent.
Right, okay, I just.
Yes, yes, I have you excited. When we did the road inventory, we did those through the federal requirements, and that bid packet was about thirty-five pages. If y'all recall, Ryan Hawkes came, he was concerned because, you know, we hadn't followed so many of those rules. There are fewer rules with the state purchasing, but there still are rules. It's, the bid packets are gonna be smaller.
I was just wanting to make sure that we had moved those funds so that we weren't going back through those thirty-five?
No, no.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
The ones we have now are seven pages.
Perfect.
Yeah, and, and I send those to John Mark, and he looks at those and points them forward. Make sure that we've got those things and we're including as a big statement.
Barbara, I've got something that, that I wanna throw out here about the fifty thousand that I learned last week when me and you talked. The fifty thousand is a one-time thing.
Right.
Once a year thing is all, all we can use. I mean, with us buying these, this equipment that we're buying and whatnot through these funds, that's one reason we're having to, to do bids even on the stuff that's under, you know, the fifty thousand, so.
That's exactly, it's sequential purchasing.
Yeah.
That's right, right for purchases now in order to stay under the bill law, that's specifically prohibited. So I'm trying to make sure we don't do that. There is one of those that I, I don't have on here, I'm gonna bring it to your attention and just explain to you. When we bought the, Mr. Applewatt, the hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar piece of equipment, whatever that was, there's a special, uh, new item that's not in the state law that if we pay for that with ARPA funds, that's how we initially did that, then we moved it over to this one, but it was approved under the ARPA funds. Those have, they have a special allowance for that kind of purchase where Mr. Taylor went out and got those quotes from other places and allowed you to get that through. You made that, we made that by the skin of our teeth, but that no longer applies. That's why, that was a big purchase that we were able to do that way, and now these smaller purchases, purchases that are wanting to, we're not allowed to do that. So there's newspaper requirements, we have to publish the ad twice over a period of two, two times, once per week, and then you have to wait fourteen days for the first publishing. Specifications may not favor one vendor over another, and they must state equivalent or minimum requirements. The criteria used to award the proposal must be the same ones listed in the bid packet. What I put in the bid packet for the criteria are these eight items that are in the state law. So therefore, y'all have the opportunity to do that as you want to. If you have any other requirements that you would like to use, let me know those. I contacted TAC to see if we could say local vendors, because frankly, I prefer we keep our money in, in Titus County, but that is not allowed. What you can do is some vendor that you had previous experience with, that is better than another vendor. So that's the way that allows you to purchase locally, but it can say locally, because your experience with the vendor was better, or even if the others were non-existent.
Would service be included in that, Barbara?
I'm sorry?
Service be included in that?
Yes.
Since you wouldn't have to go out of town?
Yes, yes, the time that it takes.
Right.
If you've got something to tow, you gotta drive down there and get the service, absolutely.
Right, okay.
That's one. We need to use purchasing cooperatives whenever available, and we must verify that those quotes are based on current contracts. For those of you who are purchasing new equipment, you send me that bid, I send it to buyer over, they approve it, they save forty-eight dollars so far, they did faster than that. We did find one, that was the old bid that would not have met the requirements, and then we got that updated. So there are, there's just things to do. And then there are requirements for vendors to disclose relationships with elected officials. Now, the next, go to the highlights. Y'all wanna come and read that stuff or you wanna print all this out and read it? Don't do it, it's too much. The next section is cautions. These are the things that are generally based on some of the information that's in the county magazine when they put that out, and then there are also items here that we have placed recently. Like I said, John Mark has looked over this, he wanted to be here today, but he had another meeting, that he had to be at. Caution, don't purchase service or products during this particular year or the total for that category will exceed fifty thousand dollars without following the purchasing requirements. Don't make separate sequential or component purchases. Don't divulge information to one vendor that's not available to all vendors. That's similar to what we talked about earlier with the air conditioning, the HVAC, we don't keep them all on a level pattern plane field. Don't have a relationship with the vendor that could create a conflict of interest. And then the law says, in fact or appearance, you may not have a conflict of interest, but if it appears that you have a conflict of interest, if you have someone that you're going to meet at dinner with them every Friday night, or he takes you out to eat, those kinds of things, that's the appearance piece of that. Don't allow vendors who have helped write the bid specifications to bid on them. Their role should be one or the other, but they cannot assume both roles. They can't write the specifications and bid. Don't ask a vendor to hold an item for possible future purchases. These are often called a layer of intent. That right there is the very thing that can get all of us in a lot of trouble. So be careful that you not do that. You will find that salesmen will tell you that, oh, I can help you, just let me know. If you need, if you need more information on the law, I'm happy to share that with Don't accept sole source without fully documenting that no other vendor provides a certain property. We have a complete sole source packet. It's the information that we developed when John Fitz was commissioner for something he needed to buy, and then Mr. Taylor looked through it and approved it for the purchase of the fire department, because obviously, we're not gonna wait for firemen to come from, you know, surrounding counties, but there's documentation that you have to do if you think you have a sole source item. Again, it talks about the location of the business. All purchases to be paid by county funds require a purchase order in advance of the order being placed. In the research on this, it doesn't have a minimum amount or maximum amount, we have to have a purchase order on every item that's placed. And the purchase orders cannot be approved until the various purchasing rules and laws have been made. The reason for that is because that purchase order is a legal document. So even if you're ready to go, if we not make the purchasing requirements, I can't give you the purchase order. To do so, I will be the person writing them all, and John Mark reminded me that there are criminal penalties for, for this. Recommendations. Attend purchasing offer to all commissioners, read the article, it usually comes out in December in the County Congress Magazine. Don't allow salesmen to convince you that their item is the very last one to, available to you at the timeframe needed. Remember that state statutes do not avoid, do not allow avoidance of the law, because the item might not be available later or it might even cost you more. Those are not questions that are within the law, we have to follow the law. And contact the county attorney or the, if you have questions. Y'all have any others?
Barbara, could you kind of explain like on, if it's not new equipment, what, what kind of bids? I think we've got some confusion there on, on what we've got to do and don't do. First of all, I want to tell you, I appreciate you giving us this, I don't wanna be going across to the district court over there. I think you've got our best interest at heart, but at the end of the day, some days we're gonna butt heads. I know my commissioners are gonna butt heads with you, but we still do appreciate the job that you are doing for us and trying to keep us out of trouble. And like I said, if, if we, if we get pouty or whatever, it's, it's not because we're mad at you, it's cause, cause of the process and it's changed a lot for me and Joe D, coming from the real world into the government world, and I do appreciate all you've done for me so far, and would just like to say that. But if you, if you don't mind touching on the used equipment, because there's, there's been a couple of things that, that we've missed out on because of having to go through that process, and if you'll just kind of clarify that, you've told me, but if you'll clarify it to all, all of us, I think it'll help everyone involved.
I have to do that. What it's required to work is you bring in and listen to specifications. You do not go out and find the trailer or the truck or the item that you want to buy, and that salesman has it on their lot and telling you, we're gonna try to buy it. You bring the specifications, you may need to go to some of those places and see what the specifications are, because we have to put that in the bid packet. Once that item is advertised in the newspaper the first time, then you can call anyone you want to and ask them to bid. What we do is we also put that on our website, it's on the homepage, the bottom left corner, it says purchasing, you can go there now and you can see all of that equipment. Now, if you've already turned something into me that you would like to buy that we are doing that's used, that vendor, you're gonna have to contact them if you want them to bid. I will not do that. So it's important that we do that, but again, that's not exactly the way it's supposed to be done. We're supposed to get the specifications, actual specifications, you know, the size of the motor, all those kinds, like a vehicle truck.
Used, 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 used included? Used items included?
Yes, I mean, the used, all the used items.
Okay.
It's a new item, when we go through, remember, eight.
Bible, right, okay.
Bible, Lord Sourcewell, there's eight of them.
Okay.
There's a relatively new one, Smart Buy, which has got a large amount of information, a lot of headers.
Okay.
Those are easier to do, because you get, they send it to you, I send it to, to them, they approve it, we're ready to go, like I said.
Don't, don't tell these commissioners it's easier to get the new ones.
But the used ones take longer and, and I'll tell you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but these are state laws that have been in place for decades and decades, it's not something that I've created, I'm not in any way trying to keep you from purchasing what you need, you know what you need, I'm trying to keep us prepared to hear the work range, because we just have to get some requirement. Now, available for you anytime for Top Gun or the, or whatever. And Judge, thank you for your attention for your support, I, I appreciate it, it's, it's not fun, sometimes we all.
It's not fun to be the bad guy every once in a while, so.
But I think that's what you pay me for, because I don't think any of y'all would go over across the street.
Absolutely.
Okay, tell me, please let me know.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thanks, Barbara.
Barbara. Get a motion to approve the written reports from the county official?
I make a motion.
Commissioner Mitchell makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number thirteen, consider and possibly accept the treasurer's report as a matter of record.
Make a motion we approve it.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker to approve that.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number fourteen, approve the budget amendments. Barbara gave y'all a list of those, I think, is that right?
Yes, sir. You want me to go over them?
If you'd like to, that'd be great.
Okay. Um, these are various departments, they're all listed here, the President's, Sheriff, Cantina, Commissary, he has some new building, well, repairs to his current building for additional cost, and we're gonna pay for that from the Cantina. I believe that those items need the requirements, there are specific requirements for what the Cantina comes in to teach for. The next item is cell phone speeds. The sheriff contacts me about asking a general nurse, for some reason, she's not been getting her cell phone paid, or she's the only medical person we have on staff over there, and when he began to look and asked around, he found out that he, he had not requested the increase. His people that were getting the phone allowance were only getting thirty dollars, while others were getting forty. So this is an item, it's gonna cost fourteen hundred and forty dollars to add to jail and then to add ten dollars per month to twelve people who were getting thirty dollars a month instead of forty. The next item here is General County, this is your insurance proceeds. We received around seven hundred dollars from TAC, it's for repairs to the Ford Ranger, but the actual cost to repair that item is seventeen hundred dollars because of the one thousand dollar deductible, so that item is here. And I do want to tell you, follow up on this topic, TAC has instructed that we repair these items and then they will do subrogation, they go back for the, the insurance of the person who caused the accident, but we do it first, then TAC gives themselves a hole or as hole as they can be made. whole or as whole as they can be named. So that's how that works. The district attorney is the next one. You know, Titus County's not had an assistant district attorney. We had David Colley. David was salaried, and he requested to go hourly because he wanted to keep up his sick leave, his comp time, those kinds of things. When he hired the new assistant district attorney, we left her at hourly. So now, Mr. Colley's requested that she be moved to salary. It meets the requirements of the Department of Labor. The treasurer, who now is federal, has done the research. The fact that she's an attorney meets, I mean, that's the top one. So this is just to pay off her 14 hours of comp time that she can earn, that he says she's not going to be able to take because of what they have coming up, and he requested that that come out of the district attorney forfeiture fund, it's $671 total. That's the hourly rate plus the benefits that go with it. Then we have precinct two, these are the former ARCA funds, I'm sorry, precinct three. Commissioner Applewhite has asked that we move $100,000 from his capital outlet budget, which was $500,000, to road materials. That's what this one is, Mr. Applewhite. And then in precinct four, Mr. Parker asked that we, we are decreasing his road materials and increasing capital outlet because the cost of that over $6,345 more than what was in his original estimate. And the last item here is precinct four also. Mr. Parker wants to add an additional part-time temporary seasonal person to help with bowling or road work just during the course of the summer. And these funds are coming from his available prior year fund balance. Commissioners, I sent you an email, I think it was February the 21st or so. After we get the audit, when we have remaining funds, then you can ask those back to your budget. So in addition to that additional part-time person, Mr. Parker also has requested an increase in other road materials of $35,000. The total increase from prior year funds is $56,323, and still leaves a contingency in his fund of $100,000 in the event of emergency. I appreciate you doing that. I think that's the conservative way to go, to put you in place in the event of suffering traffic or an emergency or active bodily whatever or something. I know that's next.
No, that's perfect. We appreciate it. Got a motion to approve the budget amendment?
Make a motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Parchman to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number 15, we're going to sign pay orders and approve the payments.
Make a motion to pay our bills.
Jimmy makes a motion to pay our bills.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Closing comments? You have anything today?
Nothing on this.
Okay. Jody, you have anything?
No, I'd like to thank everybody in the purchasing and all of y'all out there for the great job y'all do. Purchasing and everything, all of y'all.
Texas village.
All everybody up there, too.
Dana, you have anything?
You know, about that item number seven up there, you know, I got all the money I can have to fix the roads that I've got to fix, and it's still not going to be enough. And that's, I just want to explain to you what my theory is on that right there, because, you know, it's going, I got a lot of roads got to be fixed.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I'd like to reiterate what Jody said with all the ladies out there that make our job a lot easier. Melissa, we appreciate you being here today, and want to call you do for us as well, so I guess if I can get a motion adjourned, we will.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion by Commissioner Parchman to adjourn.
Second.